Good evening Board, Superintendent Height. My name is Commander Autry and I'm the Senior Naval Science Instructor at Friendly High School. Friendly High School has the largest NJRTC program in the county with approximately 380 cadets. At Friendly High School, our motto is NJRTC: Education for Life. The naval science instructors at Friendly High School have a combined 118 years of military leadership experience, 62 years of classroom instructional experience at Friendly High School. The staff works tirelessly on behalf of our cadets, working without pay on most weekends so our cadets can go on field trips and drill meets. Why do we do it? Because we have a passion for giving back to our communities and to our cadets. It is every instructor's goal to instill in our cadets academic excellence, but to take it a step further by helping them to make the correlation between what they learn in the classroom and their everyday lives. We teach them life skills such as integrity, commitment, personal and civic responsibility, and respect for authority. We help them with their analytical skills and their self-esteem. We challenge them to go beyond their comfort zones and change their old narrow paradigms for new and broader ones. You have witnessed over the past three board meetings, the products of this dynamic program. The cadets have addressed the board and are just a small sampling of the types of cadets that we are cultivating. JRTC is in the business of impacting students' lives so they have the drive to change the future. We replace timidity with boldness, selfishness with civic service, and lack of vision with a sense of purpose. Our ultimate goal is to nurture our cadets, to have the ability to adapt and acclimate themselves to any environment or meet any challenge, whether that is interacting with their peers or sitting in the presence of the highest ranking Navy officer, the Chief of Navy Operations, which our cadets and several others had the opportunity to do just recently. The JRTC program is an integral part of the Prince George's County school system. Thousands of students have worn the uniform, been taught and mentored by experienced military veterans. The county may meet their fiscal objective in the short term, but not without long-term consequences that I believe will be detrimental to the quality of education in this county. Thank you very much for your patience in hearing me share. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tracy Malak and I'm the mother of a sixth grade daughter, sorry, who is a dance major at Thomas Pullen Academy and a straight A honor student. Okay. My concerns over transportation being cut to this and other specialty schools is that a lot of students will no longer be able to attend these schools, including my daughter. This will result in more students moving back to their neighborhood schools or out of the county and less students remaining in the specialty schools. With an increase in students at neighborhood schools, teachers would have to be moved out of these specialty schools and into their neighborhood schools. Because the students are unfamiliar with their neighborhood schools and the other students in those schools, this could result in an increase in socio-emotional and behavioral problems from these students. This will result in lower test scores, lower attendance rate, and an increase in the high school dropout rate. In addition, Prince George's County Public School data has shown that children are more successful at these specialty schools, including getting better MSA scores. My greatest fear is that if transportation to specialty schools is cut next year, then the specialty schools themselves will be cut the following year. Okay, that was my discussion as a parent. I'm also a Prince George's County teacher. I am a special educator in a co-taught Head Start classroom at Francis Fuchs ECC, and I am the team leader over two co-taught Head Start classrooms and six co-taught pre-kindergarten classrooms. I was told to remind Dr. Height about his wonderful visit to our school on the first day of the school year. My concerns over the possibility that pre-K will go to a half-day program is that a lot of teachers and paraprofessionals will lose their jobs. I am also concerned that parents will not be as willing to send their children to a two-and-a-half-hour program as they were to a six-hour program. This will result in less children being ready for the academics of kindergarten and lower scores on the MMSR in which we are already below the state average. I have been a proud Prince George's County teacher for four years and a proud Prince George's County parent for seven years, and I have seen a lot of progress in this county. Please don't let us go backwards by stopping transportation altogether to specialty schools and by cutting all pre-K classrooms down to two-and-a-half hours per day. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Therese Forbes. I have one child in the Prince George's County Public School System at Berwin Heights Elementary with another one on his way. Although the agenda says I'm here for the JROTC program, which I've heard a lot about and think that is yet another wonderful program that you shouldn't cut, I'm actually here to support the media specialists and the reading and recovery programs. Media specialists are fundamental to our children's success. Studies across the country provide empirical evidence to demonstrate that student achievement increases when there is at least one full-time certified media specialist. With the current proposal, no school in the county will have a full-time media specialist. Will libraries be closed to students on days when there is no media specialist? Could that mean that the elementary schools, they could be closed for three to four days a week? Research has shown that the school librarians and their resources have several positive effects on students' achievements. Librarians provide advice to help students choose books that fit their interests, they help students navigate with online materials, they guide the students through their reading and research, they motivate the students to evaluate informational sources, they make them think critically and the decisions about conflicting viewpoints. They teach them about intellectual property rights, show them how to cite their resources when writing papers, they encourage them to compare their knowledge with writings of other students, and so much more as you've heard tonight also, which I've learned a lot. So now I have even more appreciation for them. Our public library hours have already been cut due to other budget cuts, to the point it is difficult to get my child to the library. We rely on our school library and librarian, Ms. Hoskey, much more now than ever. My daughter, who spoke earlier tonight, is actually an above-average reader. She was devastated when she heard her school library and Ms. Hoskey, her librarian, would not be available to all the students throughout their school days of the week. She is concerned for her younger brother, who loves books, but will need to have a reading and recovery program to help him with his reading. I will reach out to my government officials, but these budget cuts that you have chosen are not the correct direction to take in educating my children or any other child in this county. I've stayed and waited for my 112th position because I did not want to disappoint my child, so please, don't you disappoint my child or any other child in this county. Thank you.
Kenneth George, Susan Peterson, Alex Hurdle, Prince Dennis, Robert Braddock, Renee Van Guera, Valerie Lordich, John Archild, May Naldo, Christina Sacco. Kenneth George, Susan Peterson, Alex Hurdle. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Height and Associates, School Board members, my colleagues, my wonderful supportive supervisor, parents, my great students and citizens. My name is Susan Peterson, Green Belt resident, Library Media Specialist at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, where I also serve an Instructional Council member, meeting 7:30 tomorrow morning, and co-chair of the Middle State Standard 12 Committee. In December, excuse me, I've kind of cut it down. Budget items which directly affect Eleanor Roosevelt include elimination and transportation funding for specialty programs such as science and tech, alteration of the junior ROTC program, reduction of guidance counselors who was demanding needs to serve so many of our homeless students, and custodial staff reductions, critical of 35-year-old school. But most significantly in my focus tonight is restructuring of the staffing of the Library Media Specialists. In December 2010, Eleanor Roosevelt High School completed its Middle State Certification process. I am proud to say, and I haven't even had a chance to share it with my supervisor, that the Library Media Center at Eleanor Roosevelt was singled out for not only its outstanding advanced placement resources, its myriad databases, the phenomenal books, but especially the enthusiastic atmosphere which engages all students irregardless of ability. In the month of January, 6,397 students utilized the Library Media Center. 2,800 of this total from 94 classes, and I'm proud to say that the hearing and period classes are now coming in on a regular basis. The balance, students who signed in to research, write essays, play some poems, study. Also, over 1,360 books were checked out. Isn't that great? In addition, every Wednesday, the girls' basketball team holds study hall in the Library Media Center reference room. Also, the Black Student Association numbering over 120 meets in the Library Center. Also, the French, Latin, Spanish Honor Societies hold their inductions here and so much more. Okay. Research, as already stated very heavily, shows a direct correlation between availability and utilization of library media resources in achievement and test scores from standardized tests to achievement in SAT and AP tests. And boy, were we blown away yesterday, and Dr. Partawal is with us to share it. Yesterday, a team from the College Board, along with the State Superintendent, recognized Eleanor Roosevelt High School as number one in the country with the highest number of African-American students scoring three or higher in four areas. Advanced placement biology, advanced placement chemistry, advanced placement physics, and advanced placement language. There are the results. And the concluding remarks acknowledged the role of the Library.
Class of 2007 recently published a book.
Ma'am, thank you. Next.
Good evening Board, Dr. Height. My name is Mr. Dennis, I'm from John Hansen French Immersion Elementary School. I'm here tonight to request that you guys put the relocation of John Hansen French Immersion School back into the budget. It's been years since the students there at John Hansen, the teachers and the parents have requested that this school be relocated so they can have their own elementary school. Right now, they're currently, as you know, they're sharing a building with the Montessori program. Dr. Height, you were just recently there speaking with Dr. Osama, our principal. She, you know, you asked her what does she need? She needs her own facility to teach her kids. I'm not aware of any other program in this county that has two schools together, asking teachers to sacrifice, make concessions, and work together to have two separate specialty programs together. John Hansen, the students, this is one of the programs that you guys highlight. The students are very bright. If you ever come to the school, you'll see the work that's being done there, but they don't have their own facility. And the facility that they're in is really not even adequate for the students that are there. You moved the school from Shadyside Elementary years ago with hopes that you would put this program in its own school. And this board and the county has let that lapse for so many years. And I mean, at some point, I can only ask that you just bite the bullet, that there's a lot of need here tonight, I heard it, but the kids at that program deserve their own school. No one else doesn't have to have to deal with this. I think it's just a shame that our students have to go through this every year, hoping and wishing that they would have their own facility to be in. I don't know what more to say as a parent. I'm here for the PTA, I'm the Vice President. I'm just standing here asking you, go back to your budget, look at it, find a way to relocate these students to Shoe Guard School. The school is there, it's empty, I mean, parents are willing to go in and clean up the school, get the school ready, but we need our own facility. I mean, that's, and our program is K through 8, so this school, the facility we have, has to meet a K through 8 program. And Shoe Guard Middle School right now is the only school that's available for that. At one point, you guys had discussed this, really about, you know, putting it in the budget to move it, and once the new budget came out, it was taken out altogether. And I hate to be selfish, but I think we all have to be a little selfish sometimes for our kids. We need our facility, we need it like yesterday. There's so many things we can't do because we're sharing a school with another specialty program at that. It's totally different from what we have. It's a Montessori program. They teach differently, they address their kids differently. We have our own curriculum and everything, and you highlight the program, it's one of the best programs in the county. Give it a chance to grow so that, you know, you can...
Good evening, Dr. Height and School Board members. My name is Valerie Lordich. I am currently an employee of the Prince George's School System and have been for 18 years. More importantly, I'm a mother of seven children, and I would like to share a personal success story of my youngest child, John. In doing so, I would like to speak on behalf of the Reading Recovery Program. I actually spoke concerning this program two years ago when budget concerns then were also considering cutting this program. My son, John, was recommended for this program when he started first grade. His reading was on a Level 4, which was below grade level. He worked daily with the Reading Recovery Teacher at Rockledge Elementary School. Every day, Ms. Barbado, the Reading Recovery Teacher, would do different activities with him, one being where he would have to make up a sentence. She would cut each word out, and John would have to put the sentence back together. Might I add, most of his sentences were about the Pittsburgh Steelers, which he probably knew more about their season than she wanted to. Every night, John would bring the sentence home and we would put it together again. He would also bring one or two books to read, short and simple books, that he had read during his time in reading recovery. After a few months in the program, John went from a Level 4 to a Level 24. He was above grade level at that point. I knew how well he was doing when he chose the book, Green Eggs and Ham. I don't know if any of you have read that book recently to your child, to your grandchild, it's a long book. He read it from beginning to end, he didn't skip a beat. John is now in third grade, he is continuously on the honor roll and has shown a great interest in science. He is now teaching me things. I probably know more about rocks and components of soil than anyone else in this building. Just yesterday, his third-grade teacher was amazed to hear that John was in the Reading Recovery Program because he is one of her best students. She would have never believed that he had had trouble in reading. John has gained so much confidence by knowing how to read. He is excited about school, he wants to do well, and he believes he can do well. Reading is so critical in our children's education and is essential to their success. You can't learn about rocks, soil science, if you can't read. You can't do a math problem if you can't read it. You can't learn about people or places in social studies if you are not able to read about it. Studies have shown that if a child is not reading on grade level by grade three, the rate of success is greatly diminished in all subject areas. In this county where the MSA is of the utmost importance, how can children achieve on this test if they can't read? Scores will never increase. I was of the understanding that children come first. Please let me continue to believe that this is true. Reading impacted my son as a first grader, now as a third grader. It will continue to impact him his whole life. John is my success story, and is only right that other children should have the same opportunity as he had. Not only should this program not be cut, but there should be more programs like this. As a parent, I want the best for my child and all children, and hopefully you do too. John did want to come with me this evening, but when I saw that I was 119th on the list, I thought it best he stay home, but he wanted to thank you for the Reading Recovery Program. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is May Naldo, and I'm here because of the JROTC program. In 2001, I entered Friendly High School as a very insecure, timid, and overly conscious freshman. At that time, it was mandatory to get into the Navy JROTC program for one semester unless you played in the band. I didn't play an instrument, so I was in the program. And as many of my peers, I wasn't enthusiastic about it. I was waiting to count the days to get out of the program. However, I found that the program was more than an elective, and it was more than uniforms, commands, and cadence. I found that the program stood true to its core values of honor, courage, and commitment. And when I say commitment, look, I'm here still at this time at night, and some of those instructors are still by my side. I took those Navy Core values and I'm still applying them to my life right now. I learned how to love myself and recognize the strength and leadership and potential that I had. The program taught me to be a good follower so that I could be a great leader. And within the four years at Friendly High School, I went from a timid cadet, a nobody, to a cadet commander overseeing over 500 cadets under me. The insignias, the ribbons, the agulets that you saw the cadets wearing tonight and through these past few days, it's more than decoration on a uniform. It shows their accomplishments as leaders. The program doesn't focus on recruiting students to enter the military. If that happens, it happens. But the focus is to develop citizens. It's to allow these students to be the responsible, caring, determined members of this community. The instructors of this program really do go beyond their job description. They took personal time and continue to do so to encourage and motivate and guide cadets. And I still keep in contact with them, even though I've passed college and I'm in the workforce. I value them as mentors. And I can tell you that I wouldn't be standing here right now if it weren't for a program like JROTC. And currently, I work with youth development, so I can attest to the, just the value of these programs. And so my heart breaks to even think about considering cutting such a program as JROTC that disciplines and motivates our students. If this program is no longer available to our students in PG County, we have to face the fact that possibly hundreds of valuable mentors will lose their jobs, and that thousands of future leaders may miss out on this great opportunity. So as an alumni...
Good evening, Dr. Height, Madam Chair, members of the Board, assembled friends, family, former cadets, and colleagues. I'm Lieutenant Colonel John Milton Archild, Dr. Henry A. Wise, Senior Aerospace Science Instructor. Our curriculum is designed to make students successful in any walk of life they choose. We really don't care if they go into the service. We care that they grow in knowledge and maturity and become successful in life. To accomplish our mission, Air Force Junior ROTC curriculum uses a multi-phase approach: aerospace science, leadership education, fitness, just to name a few. I just want to highlight a couple of things in the leadership education area. It focuses on character building and civics, communication skills, life skills, and principles of management. Cadets who complete one to four years of these courses gain insight and lessons that it took some of us 20 to 30 years to learn. I worked successfully for 26 years in personnel, education, training, counseling, and labor relations. Using the curriculum, I can give real-life experience and examples. I can call on any number of professionals from the civilian sector, private practice, and the services to speak specifically on topics that will help our students develop. I'm not alone in this. All my colleagues can do that based on their experiences over their 20- to 30-year careers. We need your assistance to keep those doors open so that we can continue to provide that type of training and education to the students. That way, they can step confidently into the leadership positions in Prince George's County, Maryland, and in the United States. JROTC is a cost-effective solution. There are not many places you can get qualified and experienced teachers at 30% to 50% of salary cost. Additionally, the services provide funds for our supplies, our books, the uniforms that you saw, the field trips that we take, and the media that we use in the classroom, not the county. Also, I wish to speak on behalf of the library programs. I'm a volunteer at the Wise Library on Tuesday evenings. The library is a valuable resource that we cannot afford to lose. Our librarian, Ms. Prince, provides training and education on a variety of media programs and library science. She ensures that we have the media we need to make the curriculum relevant to our students. We can ill afford to lose the libraries or the librarians. They are a vital part of the educational experience that we provide. Likewise, I volunteered numerous hours at Camp Schmidt, our training facility for the JROTC programs in the county. I volunteered there for band camps, for the first-year cadet orientation, and for the Cadet Officer Leader Programs. This is where the training and education takes place that you saw displayed on the A...
I must admit that when I first walked into the room, I was a little disgusted. I was already angry with the fact that, of the thought of just getting rid of NJRTC. But when I saw your faces, when I saw your interactions from these people and how they came here to crowd to you, and your disinterest, and the people staring at the ceiling, and the people with their hands on their mouths laying over, and the people with their heads looking to the skies, I felt disangered, I felt disgruntled. I wanted to come in here and let all this out and come out here as an irate, experienced young student who was angry. And that was totally against what I came here for. John F. Kennedy made a quote about a crisis. The Chinese letter in crisis is made with two strokes, and one stroke represents devastation, the other stroke represents the opportunity. At this given moment, I have the opportunity to show the core values of what NJRTC got me, what NJRTC gave me, and if I was to come in here and to express how I really feel about that, I would totally be throwing that away. You right now have the opportunity to show these students that that should be your slogan, or not a slogan like, you know, failure is fine, or not a slogan like, we accept the statistic, or not a slogan like, we satisfy whatever we can get. You have an opportunity right now to show students how to fight. That's something that I never learned in a PG public school, was how to fight. I wasn't prepared when I went to college. The things that prepared me were ROTC and the counselors, the two things that you're trying to get rid of. Without those, PG public schools didn't give me anything. I ended up in all DVM classes, and I had a 3.5 when I graduated. So, you're killing your star player. You're choking out your best thing. If you get rid of this, you have no other go-to player to go to. Take the opportunity right now to at least show our children something, that you have some fight left in you. Take the opportunity to give them something to look up to or look forward to. There were students that said they wanted to be like you. Now, whether that was a ploy or a stunt, I wouldn't say that, not the way I feel right now. You have an opportunity to show us something, or at least prove me wrong in the fact that I'm walking out of here feeling. Take that opportunity to do that.
Good evening, Dr. Height and members of the School Board. My name is Alex Hurdle, I'm a citizen and resident of Prince George's County residing at 4816 Madison Street, Riverdale Park, Maryland. I'm here this evening to oppose funding cuts for the William S. Schmidt Outdoor Education Center located near Brennewine, Maryland in Prince George's County. The purpose of the Environmental Education Program in Prince George's County is to enable students to make decisions and take actions that create and maintain an optimal relationship between themselves and the environment, and to preserve and protect the unique natural resources of Maryland, particularly those of the Chesapeake Bay and its watershed. And the William S. Schmidt Center has done just that successfully for over 40 years. Few really successful programs have served the test of time in our county's public school system, and one of them is the William S. Schmidt Outdoor Education Center Environmental Education Program. In order to make a connection with the natural environment, students need the opportunity to explore, to discover, and to have very positive experience with the natural environment. If we are genuinely vested in making gorgeous Prince George's truly gorgeous, we need to raise our youth so that they not only appreciate and are exposed to the environment, but they're raised in a school system that provides a special center and curriculum that teaches them in an active way about green schools, programs like Environscape, and recycle and water quality education. In a county where many of our youths have asthma due to poor air quality, where living beings can contract bacterial infections in our rivers because our waters are so polluted, and where we will need to close down our solid waste landfill in the next few years and ship our trash out of state because we have little knowledge of how to reduce, reuse, and recycle, now is not the time to take funding out of one of our most valuable resources. We all know money's in short supply during this budget session, but let's not let our current economic turbulence end one of the great gems in the public school system. Let's think creatively. Can we look at a fee-based structure where second or third... Can we look at a fee-based structure where second or third parties pay to support part of the Schmidt Center? How about additional funding from grants and institutions or endowments specifically designed to support environmental youth education programs like this? Have we talked to Park and Planning about creative, creating a partnership in which the facility would be owned by the commission but still within the school system like we have at Fansville Elementary School? I urge the school board and administration to take a look at all of these options and more, to ensure our youth continue to have an in-house program that will allow our students of today to live in a clean and beautiful county for tomorrow. As a taxpayer in Prince George's County, I want my tax dollars to be spent on this type of program. Please fully fund the William S. Schmidt Center for the coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, that concludes our public comment list. We're often told as a board that funding is driven by a formula in the state of Maryland, and that is correct. But that is also one of the reasons that we ask you to come out, that we sit here with you. Many of you didn't speak, but you're still here, and we appreciate that. That's why we're here, because we are all on the same page when it comes to our children and the funding that we need for our children. It is statutorily defined, it is not a decision of this board that we are funded by the county and the state, and that every dime we get comes from the county and the state. So we're saying to you that we need your help. Dr. Height has to propose a budget, and he has to propose that budget based on the funding sources that we have been told we would get. That doesn't mean that we agree that programs and services should be cut. That is also why we are asking you continuously, write to our state legislators and the county council, because quite frankly, it is a formula, but it's a formula that needs to change. It does not serve Prince George's County well. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll see you on the 24th, which is the board meeting, but before then, if you want to, we can see you on Saturday the 19th because we'll be right here again in a work session. We are adjourned. Thank you.